All right, I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise and pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a ready and justice for all.
Go for Kelly.
Ms. Lynn?
She's still waiting.
It's your.
Excused.
Patchen.
She can either be delayed or excused. It depends on how late her function goes, word complication.
Mr. Otuski?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Saft?
Here.
Skadston?
Delayed.
Mr. White?
Present. Fire accidents?
They are located back at the L G I.
All right, before we start with the workshop, I just wanted to thank Mr. Giometta for decorating behind us with the posters. They look really good. They started out being visible towards the homecoming grade and they're starting to become a regular sight. Good job. All right, so for our workshop, we have our auditors, Chris and Jennifer. Come on up and give a short presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. We've recently just met with the audit committee and we have discussed the audit report in detail. We've gone through the results of the audit. As part of our audit procedures, we've conducted interviews of your district staff, performed walkthroughs of procedures of the business office, tested documentary evidence, and we've also audited the extra classroom activity funds and performed an audit of your single audit on federal award funds. After performing our procedures, we're pleased to say that we have issued four clean or unmodified opinions. Those four opinions are on your entity-wide financial statements, your internal controls over your single audit, the compliance over your single audit, as well as your extra classroom activity funds. So again, a clean opinion on all four of those audit reports. The district is in strong financial condition. You have significant reserves to provide for future liabilities. And at this time, we'd like to thank Anne Marie and the business office staff for their hard work and assistance throughout the audit process. We appreciate everything you guys do to help us get through the audit process.
They always meet us with full charge. You know, it's a painful process and the fact that they can walk around laughing and be happy and providing the data, it's a testament to how well they work together. It's truly a pleasure to come here.
Great. Any questions?
Just one thing for maybe people who may not know. I mean, the audit process is required by law, right? And it's really meant to be an independent view of our financial operations of the district to make sure we're in compliance with, you know, bold regulations and procedures. And, you know, make sure things are accounted for properly. So it's really a great oversight, double check on how we're managing to make sure nothing's happening that we don't know about.
Correct, absolutely right.
So, you know, I appreciate that.
They're vigorous. I mean, and they, you know, every year they truly rise to the challenge. You know, I think my famous thing always I say, I think I say constantly, you know, they're fighting to move forward because they have to open up the air, even though it's the busy times of them. And we're always calling them backwards. They say, wait a minute, let's do this too. And they meet that challenge well.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, I'm glad that the school district got a clean opinion on all counts. Just had a question. I believe that the state attorney controller or something does also notice. Does this replace that or does this?
No.
Okay. Take a jump. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sitting down with us and going in detail with the audit committee as well. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Does anybody have it up? No.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals, to review matters leading to the discipline of a particular individual and seek legal advice from the school attorney.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Fire on. If the record can show up. Thank you for your patience. We do have one correction to the agenda. It's item 11.03 C2. It's a change of the start date and it has been updated on board docs. It was originally 10:24, now it's 10:30 17. Do we have any student in school presentations? Parent groups? Open to the public? No one signed up? But would anybody like to address the board? All right. Unfinished business. Oh no, I skipped one, sorry. I skipped two. I was like, we're going pretty quick here.
I'll slow it down. I have a few things I want to report about tonight. First is it is a school board appreciation week. And so our school board has received these lovely bulldog baseball hats. Anthony, thanks for modeling it for everyone. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything you do. A few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of my dad visiting Beacon. A, he really loves Beacon and approved of the move. But B, we spent a fair amount of time talking about his years of service on the school board where I grew up. We hadn't really had a lot of conversations about that. He waited till I graduated from high school and he ran for the board because he was concerned about some curriculum stuff that was going on. And then he said, we spent hardly any time on that and we spent all our time on negotiations and, you know, all that kind of stuff and budget issues and budgets being voted down. And after, it was a four-year term where he was and my mom never let him run again. The reason I share that story is because just all of the time he spent, and he was already a very busy person, and the, just the time, the vision that he had, you all bring to it every single day. I always talk about the fact that this is one of the most time-consuming unpaid jobs that exists. And you all bring vision to the district, you bring accountability to the district. And for that, I just want to say thank you. And just kind of seeing how it affected my dad and how I can still talk about it very, in a very detailed fashion 30 years later, shows to me really what a powerful experience it is for you all too. So thanks for what you do. A hat really doesn't sum up the thank you, but it's a small token. And just again, we appreciate your service. I have some other things I want to talk about as well. Just a few updates on some items. One, the big one is we had a great facilities committee meeting. And Anne Marie and I, a little bit later in the meeting, will just be going over some aspects of the capital project vote. And so we wanted to kind of kick off things tonight after that facilities meeting so we could get everything squared away. We've been working on some other things in the district that I wanted to announce. Some we're very excited to be moving forward with. One is we are moving, we are moving ahead with having all of our fourth graders do the Clearwater field trip this year. I think it's something that has kind of fallen by the wayside a little bit. And I think we have one or two schools keeping the tradition going. This year, we have all four schools that are signed up and moving forward with that. And so we're excited about that. We've been connecting with the community. I've been doing some community connections. One was with Cecilia. We went to the NAACP last week and gave a presentation about some of the programs that are happening in the district, but also just answered a lot of questions or at least attempted to answer questions. It was a really great conversation. I've been continuing my connections with the community. I visited the New Vision Church of Deliverance on Sunday. It was their seventh anniversary. I was able to wish some congratulations on that. And also just, you know, again, give a chance to put a face to the name and let people know they can reach me if they have concerns, questions, or what have you. It's come up in some previous meetings, some issues with our elementary special schedule. I talked about it a little bit here. I don't necessarily have anything new, but I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. After looking at what we do, we were currently on a six-day schedule for kindergarten to first graders. They have PE two of those days, library one of those days, arts two of those days, and music one of those days. For second through fifth, it's similar, except one change. They have two PE, two library, one music, one art. I think the best thing moving forward would be to study and look at implementing a different schedule for the 18, 19 school year. My experience has been with a four-day rotation. We may want to look at different ones. It doesn't have to be that. But I want to look at one that increases PE time. We're currently a bit under the state guidance regulations and I would like to get a lot closer. And we'd also like to increase a little bit the art and music time too. And again, so it's uniform in all of our schools. So that would be an increase in staffing. We talked about year-round budgeting and that we don't need to get into the weeds of the budgeting right now. I think doing it that way would probably cost us an additional two FTE. I think the bulk of that would be with PE. But it could be also in art and music. Library is the part that's a little bit outside that four-day rotation. Kids would still be going to library. We would still have full-time librarians in all four of our schools. And except, at least in the model that I've used in the past, kids attend libraries sort of outside of that four-day rotation. But they still go to library at least once, if not twice, or sometimes even more times a week. So it would be, it would be a budget item for us to discuss. I'm just putting it out there because I think the various issues that we have with elementary specials, it'd be good to come up with one that kind of gets at all of the issues instead of, instead of just looking at one piece here and one piece there. Speaking of elementary specials, I had, we have a couple of things that we're excited about trying out. We have a very exciting meeting with our elementary librarians today. And we are looking at increasing their ability to do the maker space issues, or not maker space issues, maker space projects, excuse me, for that. So they came up with a proposal over the summer and we've been kind of looking at it. And so we're going to be looking at ways that they can do more in the elementary libraries with robotics. I think it's Ozabots is one of the things that they've requested. And also some things with 3D printers too. Some of the libraries are currently piloting that. Glenham has Ozabots, J V F has a 3D printer. We want to make sure it's uniform across all four schools. So that's something that we'll be pulling out of our technology budget. It shouldn't be a huge cost, but we want to make sure that we have similar supplies across all four of our schools. Another thing that I'm looking into, I'm not making this as an official recommendation to the board right now, but we did have that point six music FTE in the budget. Knowing that I want to try to address all elementary specials for the 18, 19, at least my recommendation is to wait for the 18, 19 school year to address all of them. I would, I have started to look into whether we can extend our instrumental music programs down to fourth grade instead of having it start at fifth grade. When I've looked at districts across the state, especially ones that have exemplary instrumental programs, they typically start at fourth, some actually start before fourth. And so I will be working with that with you. This isn't an official thing. I'm getting feedback currently from internal folks on that item. I'll be collecting feedback from the board and also parents, you know, and community members, especially ones in the music world, they may have different ideas. But I'll spend the next few weeks trying to collect feedback on that in kind of more informal, unofficial ways. But I do know that it would have a very immediate impact if we were able to pull it off, if we're able to find the right person, if the board is willing to find that position. I think it's something that could be really exciting for our music program. And again, every district I've worked in the past usually starts at a grade lower than fifth grade. And it has an immediate impact on the quality of the program. So those are my comments for the superintendent thing. The big part of tonight is our capital project plan. We have a lot of exciting things to share about that. And, but we will wait till the unfinished business portion of the agenda tonight. Thank you.
All right. Committee reports. Craig?
So the most interesting thing that's happened since the last meeting is going up to Lake Placid for the New York State School Boards Association Convention. My first time going. Anthony White went. Kenya Gadston, Virginia Patchen, and Matt Landau. So it was, I think, very worthwhile. It is a big chunk of time out of one's other life, but it's highly educational. And attended seminars on such things as how one can better design schools and learning spaces. There was a seminar on maker space, which was quite illuminating. And we had the pleasure of meeting Matt Landau's previous boss from Mythica and a couple of board members whose subject was clipboard and superintendent relations. We also had some financial seminars that were quite useful, I thought, helping to understand how the money thing works in school districts. We also heard from the commissioner, Elia, who made a nice presentation talking about the kind of things they've done to try to take some of the sharp edges off of common core in response to the outcry and advice that's come out of all the communities. But there's still some tension on that issue, particularly as relates to A P P R, the annual professional performance review. And they really don't know everything about where it's going in the future. She was frank to say that. But she expressed a lot of optimism that things would be better going forward than they have been in the past. It remains to be seen, but it was an interesting talk. So I think that that was worth the effort. And I don't, I don't think everybody can do it every year, but I do recommend it.
Thank you. Georgia?
Okay, so the policy committee met and we are going to continue our work with the wellness policy and looking at the work of the wellness committee. So we're still going to be looking at that. The district has been charged with looking at the homework policy. And so they're, they gave us a little update on that. They're doing the survey with teachers across the district to see what their procedures are for homework. So we're still working on that as well. And we're starting to look at the policy for fieldwork. And we're still going to update the sections from our E-CURVE policy book. So as we plug along, we'll be updating that. So hopefully we'll have everything updated by the end of the year.
Do you know the date and time for the next meeting? I don't have, I'm a little tech tonight.
No, me too.
Do they have board docs set or doc? Document? I want to say November 16th. Four committees. The hamsters are running. Policy 10, 11 15. 11 15 at seven? At the.
Facilities is at seven.
8 15 is a policy, 11 15.
November 15th at 8 15. Thank you. Mike?
Okay, I assume when you, Dr. Landau, you go through the capital project under unfinished patients, you'll go through all the discussion we had at the committee meeting? So I don't want to be redundant, so I'll leave that for.
Yeah, and we'll do it in a way that everyone can chime in.
Good, okay. So then, first off, I wanted to say I went to the boys and girls varsity soccer game last Friday and I wanted to see, you know, the game. And also I noticed the nets that were put up between the two fields, which looked really good. And then the posters of the senior boys and girls athletes were up on the, upon the big netting. So it was really nice to see. And talking to John, that's similar for all the seniors and the different sports. That's what they're going to be doing. So I thought that was really nice. Let me see here. Jumping to budgeting, somebody mentioned budgeting. One of the things I would like to see as we are rapidly getting to the budgeting process is that the different department heads maybe consider a long-range plan, a five-year plan, instead of just, here's what we're doing this year. I know we have vision and goals. And so how does, how does their plan for the department, where do they see it going? What are the, so what resources do they need next year and the next couple of years? Especially when you get into new types of, new types of, you know, direction where you need things from multiple departments. Whether you need, you know, you need an FTE, you need a facility, you need a policy, a procedure. So we all, if we can all align those things, then they'll get done. But if we, if we don't and one person's pushing in this direction, but the resources aren't available, it just never happens. So really to see if we can start considering that when we put in the budget plans together.
It's a great idea.
I had mentioned it last year, except for the buses. Now, the buses, I think we should have a 15-year plan because they have a lifetime of about 12 to 15 years. So you really should have a 15-year lifecycle plan of what kind of buses and transportation you're needing. Let me see here. See what else I have other than the capital. During the facilities and operations committee meeting, one thing that we also have is that the director of facilities and operations presents a report. So he's got an agenda item where he gives his report about things that are going on in the district. Some of the highlights from the last month's report were that a while back, we had some lead pipes that we had replaced. And the testing is scheduled for this week. So we'll know the results of that lead testing this week, within about two weeks after the testing about. So that was, that was good to hear. On a more difficult side, they have a number of sewage backups in some of the schools that he's investigating to try to, to try to resolve those. So they're, they're staying busy for sure. We talked about the posts and the netting between soccer fields. They also removed some graffiti from the fieldhouse and some locations at South Ave. So they were directly keeping our facilities looking good. For the warnings at Glenham and Sargent, that was a topic a couple of meetings ago. So they issued the purchase order. They actually had people from the PTO involved in those discussions and how to resolve and the warning configurations that we're going to put up. So that was really good to hear. We're getting new rugs in the high school with a new logo. Some, I know the ones I saw just had the BHS logo.
The logo will go to the one by the athletic entrance. So there's some planes, some with BHS and some with the logo.
So that's good to see. And then he was also looking at bottle filling stations. There's a few across the district, but really looking to see how to, how to have that more consistent across the different schools. So that was really good to have a report from Anthony on those items. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Anthony?
Good evening.
Oh, wait, hold on a second. Mike, the next facility and operations is at 15th at seven?
It's November 15th at 7:00 PM.
Correct. All right, Anthony?
So the diversity committee met on the 18th of this month. We talked briefly about the committee presentation that we're working on. And the subcommittee that's been working on the logistics of that has chosen January 11th as a possible date between 7:00 and 9:00. Just trying to wait for Matt to see if we can confirm whether the auditorium is available. There was a report out, the ongoing racism class, which is this week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, is actually full. So two teachers were interested. They didn't, they weren't able to get in or they're on the waitlist or something.
They're on the waitlist.
Yeah, thank you, waitlist. But Matt spoke about the, how the Beacon School District sent a full contingent to the Duchess Police's presentation by Christopher Emden, who talked about reality pedagogy and urban education. And at possibly trying to spread that lecture back to the rest of the staff here in the district for maybe turn a P E or something. Black History Month, Matt reported that the end of this month is expecting plans from administrators on not just black history, women's history, and Hispanic Latina history. Since Hispanic Latina history is a September history month, that would be simply for next year. But we would start that, that's a, it's definitely not planned to be submitted on that. And I'm glad to hear that the administration was talking about unpacking the diversity goals. We talked about the data, progress on data at the meeting as well. And that's a conversation that will be continued at the next meeting. And then we talked about barriers. But we didn't talk about any specific barriers. We just talked about logistically trying to collect information on barriers. Whether it's a survey, whether it's building level meetings or stuff like that. So that's a conversation also to be continued at the next meeting. The, and it was mentioned, I guess Ethica has both PTOs and advisory groups. So that was interesting enough to learn. The next diversity committee is November 9th at 8 15. And that's it for diversity committee. The technology committee is scheduled for November 14th. So I will be attending that. And, or between our last meeting and now, it was approached by a resident about whether or not our election process could switch to an award system. It's, I looked into it a little bit and it looks like that we can. But I found the concept to be interesting. It would set up a system where parts of the district would, would elect a representative so that not one part of the district can heavy-handedly elect the majority of the board. So I thought, you know, the city council has, our present city council in the city of Beacon has four wards, councilman, and two at large. So there is a combination. City of Buffalo has a ward system, but I think that's a special case. And, but there's nothing we can do about it right now. Nisba supports the ward system as well. I saw it as one of their, one of their things. And that's all I have.
All right. Bill?
Yes, the next Duchess County School Board Association meeting is November 2nd. There'll be a discussion there about special ed with a speaker from one of the districts. Once I get the name of the person, I will send it out to everybody. So if anybody wants to go with me, go on your own if you want. Want to share a car, right? It's up at Silver Point Turnpike at Bosse's Admin Building. The last meeting, I had mentioned it the last time that there was a handout. I just got that today in the mail, email. So I will send it out to everybody that's on how to read financial statements. So you should see that in your mailboxes tomorrow.
And Bill, just to go along with the Duchess County School Board Association, Craig, Georgia, and Kenya attended their dinner up at Nisba. And they were raving about the food. And they'll get back. Kenya?
So the public relations, the public relations committee met on 10 18. Thanks to Dr. Landau and all the team that worked on getting the survey out. So if you have not yet answered the survey, please do so. We discussed actually trying to get the survey out in Spanish as well to reach a Spanish community as part of the policy. We want to make sure that everybody gets to be involved in the process. And also dropping the information off at other locations, maybe like the library in the community so that this way people who don't have access to computers will have access to the, to the, to the survey. The goal for the public relations community is to really hear from the community on the issues that we presented, other issues that they have, and try to meet or exceed the expectations set forth. I did not plan another meeting because I think we have to plan it around the data. And so we'll do it in a timely fashion if we need to, depending on what we get back, just so that we save time. I enjoyed going to Lake Placid and all of the trainings and education and the time that I spent. Placid and all of the trainings, um, and education and the time that I spent bonding with, um, my fellow board members. Um, I enjoyed my time with Dr. Huli. Um, I'm sure he enjoyed me. Um, we had a great time. It was very, um, it was a wealth of information in a short period of time, but, um, it definitely allowed. Okay. And that's all I have.
Kenny's a little better because I made her play charades. So you know how your smartphone, you could get charades on there and you flip down if you get it and up if you can't get it? So we had a little bonding moment where I made them play charades during the Cubs game because Mr. Dr. Landau is a Cubs fan. So to try and alleviate some stress for playing the charades during the Cubs game and they found it very amusing. Some people make awkward sounds during charades and some people have a hard time acting out, but it was a good bonding experience for the board members that were up there. Um, one of the things that, um, Dr. Landau and I talked about with NISBA is next year it's gonna be in New York City. It's October, uh, twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. And we're gonna put, um, charge Anne Marie to find a air bed in the residence there that accommodate, uh, like eleven people because we think it would be a really good bonding experience for the board. They have that maturity of living in a house together. It was, uh, it was quite interesting. Um, but it was a good bonding moment and it got us closer as, as, uh, board members and stuff. So.
Isn't there a rule to have like a designated supply in case of?
Well, I can tell you it wasn't Dr. Landau. Um, I don't know who locked up the house last. It was either Georgia or Kenya, I think. Or was it you, Craig?
No.
That was you two. So.
And we wanna thank Anne Marie for getting those accommodations that were beyond suitable.
They were, I mean, we were right on Mirror Lake and the house was a five-bedroom house and we could walk right to the conference or walk home. Um, and it was, it was really nice, uh, scenery for it. Um, one of the conferences that I attended was the, um, Annual Business Meeting where there were about thirty resolutions that were up for vote, um, for the, um, year, the state, um, NISBA Annual Conference. Um, a lot of them did vote. I think one of the ones to highlight is that the, uh, Black Caucus, um, um, is gonna have a seat on the Board of Directors. Um, and that voted with a seventy-four point six percent approval rating. It needed sixty percent. It was, uh, it was really close. There were some districts that felt that, um, they're elected officials and they shouldn't have one seat. Um, but we, as the NISBA Board, recognized that, you know, we need different perspectives and so forth. So it did vote. Um, and it did pass.
They had a seat, but they weren't able to speak.
Correct. It was non-voting.
Yeah, I was a non-voting position. So they tried. It's the second year. So.
Correct.
And it passed.
There were four other resolutions that I thought I should highlight, um, and they were pertaining to the tax cap of two percent. Um, one resolution was to have a minimum two percent, uh, increase. So not to have a maximum two percent, uh, tax cap, but have it be the minimum. Um, there was another one that your tax levy can't be negative. So what happens in some, uh, with exemptions, what can happen in some districts is, um, you may have a zero percent increase, but your levy has, is negative. So then it, it's not even getting up to where it was the prior year and so forth. And there were two other resolutions about the tax cap. Um, you could go right on NISBA's website and see all the resolutions that passed. There were a couple that did fail. And the reason why they did fail was, um, they were, some of them were repetitive and that they were already, um, in, in the resolution process there. Um, and I also attended the pre-law conference, which was Thursday morning. And there's a lot of, uh, lot of laws that are coming out around education. One of the, um, it's not a law, but one of the things they highlighted is, um, the displaced families that are happening in Florida and Puerto Rico. That district should be, uh, willing and have their doors open to, to these students and make sure that you, um, basically treat them like a, uh, make, making a double on this, uh, student, you know, try and get them enrolled first and then go a little bit deeper later on with the residency piece. And so that's something that, um, the Commissioner also acknowledged during her speech as well. Um, Commissioner was, I thought, pretty blunt. And, uh, you know, she, she recognizes about the APPR, um, APPR. And, um, she realizes and I, there are a lot of board members that were talking about, uh, they need to decouple the APPR to, to the student performance piece and, and not have it be part of, part of the process where the state assessments are good to find out how the districts are doing. Um, because everybody pays tax dollars and we wanna assess how our school system is doing. But realizing that once you tie it to an evaluation system for teachers and principals and stuff, that, then it's not about the students and it's more about, uh, an assessment piece for, which is not intended for. Um, so she, she recognized it and I thought acknowledged that clearly. She may not have came out with those exact words, but I thought she really hit, hit upon it. Um.
Before you go, I forgot. So I just wanna say thank you for the hat. Uh, I love the attire. I'm always representing Beacon. And thank you to the BAA for my, um, my coffee thing. And thanks to the students, um, to work. The cleanliness of this room is attributed to them. And so they gave us some candy. So I just wanna say thank you. Um, as a member of the school board, I, I, I'm honored to, to be here and to serve the district and the kids. And so this is one of the things that I, I get a lot of pleasure out of doing is, is serving and making the lives of the children and families that we support here a better place for them to go to school.
And the last point that I had about the NISBA convention was that, you know, we sometimes think that we're in a silo and that the problems that we experience here in Beacon are only experienced in Beacon. Well, speaking to other board members throughout the state, I could tell you, um, it's not. It's happening throughout the state in different school districts. And it's kind of, uh, you know, comforting to know that we're not the only ones going through some of the, um, problems and, and we're working together. And it's really nice to have that. That was one of the largest conventions that Lake Placid had. So it'll be nice and interesting to see what New York City has next year. So. All righty. So we do have unfinished business. The first, uh, item up is the capital project.
Oh, I'm, hold up, Matt. Kristen, do you have any board comments?
Uh, no. Well, just on the wellness committee met and we're advancing a policy hopefully by December. We, um, had the deadline of today or yesterday to get our comments to, um, Karen Vigano on different sections. So it will be coming. Um, and, uh, I actually left before they said when the next meeting would be called, you know, Karen applied out to put on the, do you remember, was it stated? Because I feel like what we've worked on was a deadline for the, um, for the pieces of the policy. And, uh, that should be presented to the administrators of the, of the elementary administrators this week and the secondary administrators.
I believe it's November seventh. November, no, seventh, right? I think it's in.
Okay. Thank you. So that's it.
Was it? Thank you. I'm sorry. I forgot to.
It's okay. I'm actually, I was semi-relieved, but, because I'm listening up on all this deep again.
All right. Sorry. No? Uh, just, I guess before we, one thing I forgot to mention to the board is, uh, we had, uh, posters drawn up of the board goals and I just got like kind of the final draft of, of that poster. So we're gonna have them in each of our buildings and kind of not, not maybe in every classroom, but all around our buildings and our, and our departments, et cetera. So we're excited to get the board goals out, even more out than they are right now. Uh, but moving along, Anne Marie and I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to kind of officially, uh, present, uh, the capital project to the community. So we realized we've, we've talked about it a lot, you know, in the boardroom. We've also talked about it a lot at the committee level. Mike's done a fantastic job as the Chair of the Committee, bringing this to fruition. And so I just wanna say to the board, please, this doesn't have to be a super formal presentation. Just jump in, uh, as you see fit, when you wanna add something or, or make a point. This has been a, a group team project from the start and, uh, and we're really excited to bring this to the public. So, uh, one of the room was talking about the NISBA conference and I will, I, I will throw my piece in. I attended a, a workshop, uh, that was about communication and, and dealing with issues in your community. And one of the things, uh, although this, this seemed like common sense, it's always nice to have, have things refreshed. One of the things the presenter talked about was, uh, a, a leader of, uh, an organization needs to be both responsive and responsible. And I think this capital project is a great example of both being, uh, responsive to the needs of the district and responsible in terms of how we're using taxpayer money to fund this. Uh, we're in charge. We have a lot of buildings in the district and we need to take care of them. And so, uh, a lot of this work has been through a really exhaustive process, uh, with the Facilities Committee really, really getting into the details and figuring out kind of, uh, what needed to happen. So, uh, I'm gonna talk a little bit about sort of the, the bigger scope items of the capital project. Anne Marie is going to talk about, uh, some other aspects of the project and the most, you know, the most important part. She's gonna talk about the financial part. And then lastly, I will speak about the commu-, the communication plan that we have going forward about the project. So, uh, you know, some of the big things that are happening, we won't necessarily go exactly in this order, but some of the big, big things that are happening, uh, with this project are obviously health and safety upgrades, uh, and some repairs. But, but some bigger things like, uh, turf field, uh, state-of-the-art science lab at Rambaut Middle School and to renovate the Home and Careers Classroom. And so when we talk about responsive, responsible and responsive, uh, I wanna talk about the turf field, uh, a little bit. We, we've been talking a lot about this at the committee level. And, uh, as a, both as a board and as a staff, been having a lot of really healthy back and forth about it. And, uh, just at this last committee meeting, we made a decision to, uh, recommend that the turf field, uh, doesn't go at Hammond Field, but instead it goes behind the, I don't know where I'm pointing right now, but behind the high school that way. Uh, and so I wanted to talk about that a little bit because that's probably the biggest change. I think sometimes when a board works on something like this for a lot of time and all the meetings are public, so people start to kind of assume, you know, there's gonna be a new field at Hammond. So I wanted to speak about that, uh, a little bit. So, um, some, a lot of factors went into our decision for that. Um, and one of the things that we wanted to do with this capital project is to really be thinking long-term. We feel like in five or six years, we'll be able to put another capital project out for the community that will have a much greater scope. And so when we started to think about athletic fields, we really started to think about lights and wanting to put a, to invest money in a turf field somewhere where we feel good about putting lights. Uh, when you have lights in a field, it just increases the amount of use that we can use as a district. It also increases the usage that the community can use a field. And so when we started thinking about that long-term vision of having lights, or who knows, maybe it might be a shorter-term vision. But when we started thinking about that long-term vision of having light, a lighted field, uh, we really started to think about whether Hammond was the appropriate place to do that. Uh, as everyone knows, Hammond Field is in a neighborhood. Uh, there's, there's, you know, neighbors and houses that basically are on all sides of the field. And, uh, and we get concerns from people in the neighborhood already about, you know, noise during games or traffic issues and, and things like that. Well, we can't make all of that go away. We really started to think, uh, and, and a lot of this thinking was John Giometta, our new Athletic and P E Director, about maybe we should think about putting it in a different place. And so, uh, we tossed around different ideas. And just at this last Facilities meeting, uh, we came upon doing it behind where, behind, where we have, uh, where we have our soccer games. And so we talked with our architects. There's room to do turf field there. There's room to put bleachers. Uh, and it's just a, it's a, it's a space where we feel eventually if we wanted to put lights up, that we could put lights up. And we feel it's, uh, us being a good neighbor, but also having, uh, a little bit more control over a field that's gonna be used a lot. And by control, I mean, it'll be behind the school. We can kind of control access to it. Uh, we could allow for, um, really more safety, uh, um, than, than it being in the middle of a neighborhood. So that being said, we started to think that it'll also allow for other uses. And we have in the slide assist for athletics. Uh, but if we started to scale up, having like a marching band, our fine arts, uh, build, our fine arts rooms are right where that new field would be and they'd be able to practice out there, uh, by just walking outside the door. Like, you know, we really see that this field would be used a lot. Uh, and it also, having that turf field and keeping Hammond, uh, field as is, would allow the community to have greater access to our athletic fields as well. Um, so, so that's, you know, the piece with the turf field. Uh, we feel like most of the districts, uh, in the area have one already. We think it will really be a, a great benefit to not only the district, but the community. And I forgot to mention one last thing about Hammond Field. Uh, you can't help but notice that the track is used a lot by the community. I mean, it's right there. People are walking, are running on the track and at it really all times of the day. And obvi-, we're gonna make some upgrades to that track. Uh, I think resurfacing in some spots, uh, with this capital project. But we, we wanted to be really clear that the use of that will still be there for the community. Like that Hammond Field is not going away. We're just going to have a turf field behind the high school where we can have even more games and possibly lights at some point. Not trying to have this be like the only thing that's said about this capital project is it has a pretty big scope. But that is probably the most recent change and we wanted to take a chance, at least in our fir-, very first meeting, about it to articulate it. But Kristen, yeah?
The other thing I, I don't know if you said, but the, um, turf field will have more than just one purpose. It'll, it'll not just be a football field, but it, it could also be a soccer field, right?
Oh, yeah, for sure. And it'd be marked for lacrosse, too.
And lacrosse.
Lacrosse and field hockey. And then there was discussion, and I don't know where it ended up, um, after, but exploring of putting a baseball diamond with removable.
Or softball.
For softball.
Softball, right. Because they were the ones that canceled it.
Yeah, they had a lot of problems in the spring with water and they, and they have to cancel games. So that would be a good, you know, it's a huge benefit for it is you don't have the, you know, the, the water issues. When it's raining, it drains, it's much better. So, and it doesn't get beat up when it's, uh, when it's, when it's wet.
What would happen with the, uh, is that, we're gonna take down the football field that's there? I mean, is we're no longer gonna play football at Hammond Field? It'll be over at the, the new?
Uh, most likely we would still be having a lot of the practices at Hammond, but the games itself would move over to the turf field.
So are there any accommodations for spectators in this? Or is that a future type thing for the?
Uh, not as big as what's at Hammond right now. There is, there is some accommodations for some bleachers. Uh, we would increase that. Uh, I was at the soccer game on Friday and there was a huge crowd. And, uh, granted, not many of them were in the bleachers that are back there. But, uh, I think just being back there with the, there was probably a few hundred people back there for that game. Uh, being back there with that number of people has made me feel better about, you know, having people back there for games on a regular basis. But we would add bleachers for sure.
Okay. There, there are, I mean, we do keep equipment down at Hammond Field. So we, we need to put a building up here to keep your equipment in or we put it in high school or?
Uh, we spoke to Mr. Giometta about the football equipment specifically, and there is room within the locker room to do it because there, because the locker rooms are, are multi-rooms, um, within there. Um, so he could, we could leave the equipment there, you know, after a game. But you, we would be utilizing the fieldhouse as well because if there's practice down there. So we'd be able to use both areas.
Um, one, one, I mean, there were reasons listed for why, why to have the football games over there as opposed to down at Hammond Field. One reason that wasn't listed in, in the, is, is that that field down there was shorter than regulation. So it's, it, uh, it's not a true, you know, hundred, hundred-yard field. Uh, the field, the field, the field posts are, are too close to the playing area. They're supposed to be back further. The end zone is too short. I mean, there's a lot, you know, there's, it's just not from a, from current day standard point of view, it's not up to, up to snout. So I'm assuming we're, we're gonna put a new multi-use thing. If we're gonna play football field, it will be the true, true length and it will have the, the, the post at the right spots and the end zones large enough as, as well.
That didn't work to our advantage this year, Bill.
Well, because all the other teams go, wow, this, I don't have to run as far.
One of the other things, and I know Dr. Landau mentioned lights, um, you know, one of the benefits that we do or when we do get lights is that, um, for example, in late in the season for soccer, uh, you have to start, you know, games at, you know, two o'clock. So, you know, cause you're gonna run out of daylight. So kids have to be taken out of class early where if it lights, then you can start at regular time after school and, and play in the dark. So that's a, that's a big, one of the big benefits for, for lights on.
When we do get to the lights, I mean, one of the concerns we'll have to address is, is the neighborhood. Cause originally we were, uh, a long time ago, we talked about the, the possibility of putting lights, but a tent score, which of course is much closer to the houses there. And the neighbors were, you know, not really in favor of that. So this is not quite as close, but I'm sure that will still become a concern.
And one of the things, Bill, that we talked about at the committee was how the technology for lighting has improved vastly where it's more directional and you don't have that overflowing stuff.
Yeah, I'm confident that the, the kind of lights they're talking about, I saw some of these up at the NISBA convention. And it's really impressive how carefully controlled that light can be with these L E V luminaires. And, and doing it in that site, I don't think anybody's gonna be bothered unless they go lighting in the swamp and back or something. and back or something.
And then, what about the drainage back there? Because I know it's, you know, I'm assuming we're putting turf field in this drainage for that anyway.
It would've been with either location.
So, just talking about board goals for a second. One of the board goals is to create 21st century learning environments. And so, we feel that the, the new science lab at Ramout will really help move us in that direction. We've already had staff at Ramout do some initial work, very initial, obviously, but some initial work with our architect over the summer. We were over there, Cecilia was part of that, it was a very hot day. And we were, we were, you know, checking things out and starting to dream for the future. And also, to renovate the home and careers classroom at Ramout, which is in real serious need of renovation as well. So, those are some improvements that are happening at Ramout. And then, we also just have some general health and safety upgrades happening.
We do. And a lot of that work that we talked about was part of the five-year plan that the, that the school districts are required to do. So, it's a huge plan, but it lets us identify some things that may have to be upgraded. So, we've put it into two categories, health and safety and repairs. And the first slide kind of showed some clip art, but kind of where we were going with it. So, we're, you know, safety would be non-compliant ADA handrails in bathrooms across the district in several schools, some fire-rated doors and frames, some emergency exit windows. That would fall under the health and safety area. For repairs and maintenance, we're talking about bathroom partitions, which I did put the picture in because some of the elementary schools really need an upgrade in that. Some unit ventilator replays, some classroom carpeting. Some of the elementary schools have carpeting, we'd like to take that up and put tile with, you know, with, just with area rugs. Flooring and ceiling tiles, exterior doors, pool lockers, a scoreboard in the pool, which we've been talking about for a long time, that we are, we're not able to fund through the general fund. And just some other general replacement and repairs that would be larger ticket items to actually be paid for through the general fund. So, since I'm talking about funding, the only thing I did not put on this slide, I realize now, is the total project cost is eight, eight million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And so, that's the total amount. But we're happy to say this would be the project financing persons, portion. So, we have funds remaining from our Excel project. So, years and years ago and a couple capital projects ago, we had 2.7 million dollars given by the state. We were great about using it with our building aid, but we still have 342,000 dollars left that we can use towards this project. So, that helps pay for it. The voters were, voted for a capital reserve. When you voted for the budget, there were four propositions. One of them was to fund the capital reserve. And part of our financial plan at June 30 was to put a million dollars, up to a million dollars, and we were able to do that. So, there's a million dollars sitting in the capital reserve we can use towards this project. So, we don't have to borrow as much. And as a reminder, our building aid from the state reimburses 66.9%, so we get that back in building aid. And then, the decrease in debt. So, obviously, we're gonna put out a bond for the difference between all of the aid part. But we are getting a decrease in the district debt. And we systematically decided to do this project at this time so that all of these things contributing with the decrease in debt, there will be no increase in the taxes. We're trying to keep the levy flat. So, we're able to do this project with all of the aid and with the debt coming off, being paid in full, the principal and interest, that we won't have an increase in taxes. So, we think we can do all of these things and be fiscally responsible by not putting it through the general fund and increasing the levy, but by doing it through a capital project. These, important thing just on this slide is the, is the building aid. So, for some of the repairs that I spoke about and the health and safety, if we were to put it into the general fund budget, we do not get that 66.9% building aid. That's relatively high for the area, you know, so we're lucky that way. So, if we account for it this way, it's actually cheaper because we, we get the aid back and we don't have to increase the levy by any more than, than that.
So, a huge part of this effort is the communication plan for the project. And so, we're, we're doing a number of things with the communication plan. One is we're planning on doing a lot of face-to-face meetings. So, you can see up there, we, we are working on getting the JVF time and day. But we have all of our other schools. And those are geared, you know, to school PTAs for both staff and parents. And it will be Ree, myself, Anthony Damato, our director of facilities. And at some of them, John Giometta, our athletic director, will be there. And we will do a presentation, we'll get a little bit more in-depth on, you know, specific things happening in each building. But then, we really will open ourselves up to questions as well. Like, we really want to be open and transparent about this. We're also having two community meetings, one kind of right in the middle of November and another at, at the end of November, closer to the vote. I don't think we've mentioned yet, the vote is on December 5th. And we want to do a lot of face-to-face to try to answer as many questions as possible. So, that all being said, we will have a, like a kind of postcard mailer that will be going home. We've set up this section on our website already that will have information about the capital project right now. It just has information about, about the voting process. We will start, really in the next couple of days, putting a lot of the other information about the project up on the website. We'll be using social media and email to put the word out that way. We, we really want to put a lot into this. I, I was highly aware, coming in, that in my first six months on the job, I'll have a vote. And so, it's really exciting to have that. And so, this was a great process, it's a great thing to come in and be a part of. And, and, and we're excited to get out and do the community. I've, I've worked hard the first few months being here to just be out and about in the community for community conversations or just meet and greet kind of things. And I think that wasn't all about this vote, but that's all about having something like this not be the first time people have seen me or staff out in public. I think that's really important. And so, we are very excited about that. All the questions that we get at all these different meetings will go to an FAQ section of the Capital Project website because we have found, you know, past experiences doing stuff like this, that someone asked a great question at one of the, one of these events. And then, that question just sort of goes out into, into the air, not to be heard of again. And so, we're gonna put questions that we think other people need to hear the answers to. We'll put those up on an FAQ section of the website. But we're excited about this. We invite the board to attend any of these and help us, help us answer the questions as well.
I just want to put this slide up since there's a date.
Yes, yes, there's our vote.
So, just a reminder, the voting process is the same as, as the May vote. So, these are the same locations, same time. It is a Tuesday, December 5th. And again, you'll hear that a lot, but, you know, we'll do, the board meeting would be the Monday before Thanksgiving. So, we'll do a workshop portion just to familiarize everyone. And again, Dr. Lindell mentioned the postcard, which we have approved, which I gave a copy to the board. So, we're looking, you know, if you have feedback, you can email it to us. And we can, we'd like to get it printed, even if we don't mail them until the second week and, or third week in November, as a reminder to people to go out to vote. We're gonna use them and we'll have them with us when we go to the PTA, PTO, PTSO meetings and the community meetings, just as a informational for people.
There's an asterisk on that part about zero new tax impact. I think people should understand that this is in reference to the capital plan and its impact. I wouldn't mind somebody to think that we were fooling them if there was a tax increase in some future year due to other factors. We, this, the capital plan is only a portion of what we pay when we pay our tax bills. We pay one bill that covers all of our expenses. And, you know, the operating debt or the debt for a capital, I mean, is part of what we pay each time we do our bill.
So, did you see, yeah, did you see the second page where we talked about that? And it's specific to, we wanna be careful not to say it's the capital portion of our budget. We need to say it's the capital fund?
Capital.
Okay. Because that's, that's really, that'll show then that we're not talking about the regular budget process.
I just wanted to add, I wanted to say thank you to Mike Krkowski because through this project, I mean, a lot of people worked really hard on the facilities and operations side, but through the project, there was a retiring facilities director, a new director starting, a new superintendent starting. And there are a lot of details to stay on top of. And he has gone through everything very carefully with tremendous oversight and care and communicated a lot to the members of the committee exhaustively, I would say. Very, you know, we understood everything that was happening all along. And it's with a lot of confidence that we put this forward. And a lot of it has to do with all the effort you put in.
Thank you. Very good. Appreciate that.
You might add that we also had a new athletic director.
That's right.
Transitioned there. And it was very good when John Giometta jumped in and got right up to speed like a jackrabbit's start and briefed us very carefully about why we needed to make the decision to go behind the high school to the soccer field to do the artificial turf field. So, this was kind of difficult to come to that decision because we just needed the information from the owners of that, that wheelhouse. So, I thank Mr. Giometta for that as well. And I would also say that with all of that, as Kristen mentioned, with all of that kind of turnover, I'm pleased that we've managed to come to this juncture on schedule, on time and within budget.
Alrighty, anybody else? Alright, thank you so much.
Does everyone on the board have a copy? Did you guys get a copy? Okay.
Alright, the next discussion is on the RFBI that was submitted. So, just to give you, I believe you guys received the communication through Kelly about the email that we received. They would like to have a 20 to 25-minute Q and A with the board. And they gave us three, three questions. The first question was describe your interest in the site and why the Beacon, and why the Beacon site fits well with your proposal. The second is, what do you see as challenges to developing on the Beacon site? And the third one is, do you plan on applying for or asking for public funding or financing? Do you anticipate your project being contingent on public funding and financing? And so, we need to, the board needs to speak as one, so we need to come up with answers for these three questions and then see what, first of all, we don't have a date, so they're gonna be contacting us with a date after October 26th. During the week of October 30th.
I think that they're waiting for us to propose some dates and times and see if it'll agree with their schedule for the week of October 30th.
Right, so I was just reading that in the email saying that it was after October 26th because of scheduling in the week of October 30th with the group. So, would anybody be available for that phone call, I think, first for October 30th?
October 30th?
Not October, the week of October 30th.
Which extends into November.
It does. Kurt, you'd be available?
Do we even know what time that will be?
We won't, I will have Kelly communicate with them to see what we propose some dates and times.
Well, I think it depends. If it's during the day, I won't be, if it's during the evening, I will be.
I think they ask for, during the week, during business hours.
I probably may be available.
Kristen? Anthony? Anyway. Georgia, no? Ken, no? I just want to give them a frame of reference just because they did say who they. And I would also ask that we reach out to our law firm because they gave us a, on the phone, they're gonna have one, two, three, four, five, six people. They're gonna have two senior counsel. So, I think that we should have our attorney there as well, just in case they can ask the questions or, you know, guide us on this part. Is everybody fine with that?
I mean, it would depend if it was more towards the beginning of the week.
Alright, so we'll have, we'll get some dates and we'll reach out to them with some dates and times and then we can firm it up. I was really looking to see who had flexibility with that during the business hours.
I think Meredith has flexibility during business hours. Depends if, you can probably reach out to her.
Are you speaking out for her? Are you volunteering her because she's not here? I don't want to be accused of being.
I would like to volunteer. Well, I just know that if she has enough notice, she, and doesn't have something.
I'll put question mark.
Yeah, question.
Volunteer is not a transitive verb.
Yes. I nominate.
You get a second there, too. So, first question, describe your interest. How are we gonna, I would lay some direction for the board as to how we're going to answer that question?
I think at some point, we need to have a clearer idea of what we want to do with that property. At this point, you know, so far, all we talked about was, oh, it's, it's available, maybe we could use it someday. But, you know, that's, at some point in this whole process, we need to get a little bit more definitive, but we're not gonna get any further than we are. And so, I think we need to discuss a little bit more, you know, what is our vision, what are our plans? You know, what we want to do with it, yeah.
Well, I think that's what we need to do to answer question number one. And that's something hard because I think that the community would need to be involved in that. I mean, our enrollment's been going down and now we're looking to acquire land. And then, to say, hey, how are we being fiscally responsible getting 45 acres? Who's gonna tear down? I, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions about that, but.
You know, I wonder if, if we have any information possibly. Anthony may have picked up something about who else is interested. And some of them had indicated a desire to partner with others, which could be us in some way. Do we know anything more about who else has responded?
Yeah, so, in terms of partnering, there was Common Ground partnered with somebody, I believe, to put the proposal to the site. And in terms of what Bill was saying, you know, we're, we're, this is a very preliminary stage. This is kind of like foot in the door. So, you know, it's, it's, I think, I think they're just asking why we're interested, not, not, like, what would we?
Well, I think we're, I mean, I disagree.
They said, describe your interest in the site and why the Beacon site fits well with your proposal.
I think we're beyond preliminary. I think if you don't have something concrete in mind, that we're not gonna get any further.
Well, well, I mean, we, we'll find out at the conference call.
But I think we need to, we need to be able to answer that question.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I, I did, I did answer it to some degree in the, in the proposal itself. I spoke about.
You answered it, but I don't think.
No, I know, but, but, but I'm proposing an answer. And I want to know if the board disagrees. I'm not saying, I'm not speaking.
No, I understand what you're saying. You're gonna propose.
You know, I'm gonna propose an answer, basically that we could use the space for trade-based or post-secondary non-degree occupational training. Or at least find partners that would do that so that our, our graduates can, can benefit from that. If they just walk across the property to Jason Campus, and they call the Beacon Camp the campus. They, it could, it could definitely make our, our children more marketable, more ready for the working environment. There was talk about, we could talk about possible agricultural projects. We do have a growing agricultural community that's composting, we have common farm projects, Common Ground. We, we're, we're ahead of the Poughkeepsie in the farm school program thing partnerships. And teaching, teaching kids early about agricultural activities does help with food security and sustainability.
But I think we do that now, Anthony. I'm just hearing a list of stuff saying what the land could be used for, but I wanna, it's not really answering the question. Describe your interest in the site and why the Beacon site fits well with your proposal.
Well, the Beacon site has land for agriculture. It was, it was an agricultural-based for activities there.
But are the buildings usable? Because you had the building site and I heard that they weren't usable.
Not all the buildings are usable, but some of the buildings, Anthony Damato had said that could, were, I don't know how many of them, I don't have a number, but it's, it's, it varies widely. Some buildings are in decent shape, would take a little to turn them open up. And some buildings are just a disaster. So, there are, there are parts of the site that could be opened with little, with little thing, with little, little fixes. So there are, there are parts of the site that could be opened with little, with little things, with little fixes. The, there was some equipment or even infrastructure that was new and there were some that was very old. I think one, one of the hot water heaters was actually almost new that was there. So there is, there is, there is, it varies, it varies.
So he says, he said trade schools and?
Agriculture, yeah, agriculture. There's wetlands on the site and we spoke about, you know, our ESA projects over the summer. You know, wetlands, we can have, could be an outdoor laboratory for the science program.
For me, I just thought that, I'm sorry, I may have gotten this all confused. So what I was thinking is that we just had to say whether we wanted to take a look, like have the opportunity to look at it, not that we're going to come up with something to actually now get the ball rolling to start another project. So I may have, I may have misunderstood what, what, what we were doing here. And then the fact that some of us are doing stuff independently is another question.
Yeah, I think the first phase, we were just expressing an interest in the property. We wanted to see if there was somebody else to reach out to us and say, hi, I'm interested in doing something on the property, maybe, you know, partnering with you or. But none of that has happened to this point, so I think we're at the point now, they're saying, okay, you expressed an interest in the property. Okay, you know, tell us more, so I don't think we need to.
It can't be all over the place.
Yeah, we don't have to have one idea. We can come up with more than one idea, but I think they have to be, we have to get pretty specific at this point in terms of what our vision is.
And I think it's hard to get specific because we haven't gotten any inputs from any constituents or stakeholders in the community and so forth.
I mean, when we were doing the site walk, the Common Ground board member was, actually didn't want to partner with us. He actually asked if we can, if he can have a medium.
But Anthony's speaking to you as an individual.
I, I sent that email to Matt and Anne Marie and Anthony and it just never happened.
How can you initiate it with the rest of the board, though?
No, because I, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to take the lead on it. I was trying to shuffle the information forward, you know, and, and.
I mean, and that's the hard thing, Anthony, because I know that they've been reaching out to you. I know that Kelly was directed to give the five packets, the flash drive and mail it out. And then you emailed them based on the discussion. You said, I said you could email it as an individual and you did. But then they're reaching out to you when Dr. Landau was the contact person. And then you sent them an email saying, please go through the board clerk and they're still going to you.
Yes.
I mean, and that's, that's hard to, because we're trying to conduct the business and it's always going through you as an individual and not the board process as the district clerk and/or the contact person that was on the proposal.
Sure.
I, I don't know why they didn't send it to the person that was contacted on the proposal.
I don't know why.
Well, maybe they didn't do that because the same, Anthony sent the same proposal that Lloyd had drafted to them. So if you're looking at two identical things, you may think that this person is allowed to act. So I think I responded somewhere and said that this is where I believe we continue to get into this on-the-line kind of thing where people cannot decipher whether or not we are acting on behalf of the school board or we are acting as independent taxpayers in the community. So this is a little frustrating to me.
Well, well, we, we all, we did vote or agree to submit, right? We all talked about it. We agreed to submit this, you know, to keep our foot in the door and to see what comes of it. So, so we did agree to do that. You know, there's some nuances here about who they're communicating with, but, so they responded and so I think that we should give an answer to answer their questions.
But it's hard. How do you answer?
Well, we, we would base it on, we would base it on the proposal. You know, we're thinking of some agriculturals, we were trying to partner and we just, instead of making things up, we have written the proposal and that's really all we go with. They may say, it's not, it's not in line with our vision and thank you for your interest, but we're going to look elsewhere. But I think our answers are in that proposal.
Expressed in the proposal for number one.
Right.
Okay.
And probably all the questions, you know.
Number two was what do you see as challenge, challenges in developing, to developing on the Beacon site?
Right, we talked about the buildings.
Was that piece stated? Was that stated in the proposal?
Not specifically.
I think I can help a bit with that. I think the biggest challenge is that the state is looking for somebody that would take over the whole thing and take it off their hands. That's the state.
They were looking at tax base as well.
And had to do something productive there and get some jobs. Jobs is the number one thing they're talking about. And local people in rejecting the previous proposal that did come forth the last round talked a lot about they wanted to see more tax revenue from it than they proposed. So I think the biggest challenge for us is figuring out what potential uses we would make of it and realizing that they wouldn't necessarily be the entire site. And so therefore that leads us into wanting to have discussions with potential partners, some of whom we may not have identified. I think the problem is the state's process here is not a nice roundtable process. Suppose they had a roundtable like this and everybody who expressed interest came in and said, well, here's what we'd like to do. Here's what we think. And you see what kind of commonalities you may have. Somebody may say, you know, we don't run the whole site either. We'd like to have the school district take one building and do something useful with it. We'd like to do something else with this. We might knock that one down and put something else up. It's hard to know.
But I also think, Craig, too, that the state, they said that it was for private companies to submit proposals and we as a public submitted it disregarding that piece in the part of.
It isn't limited, it isn't limited to private companies.
There's nonprofits that are submitting too, which would be off the tax bill completely. And we can't really deny that possibility if it's the best use of the property.
I mean, to me, I think the challenge is facing anybody that buys a property is number one is the drainage and the problem that's been in the past. Also, I think as far as, you know, remediation of the, of the buildings there or taking them down, I'd be worried about any, any pollution on the site. I mean, it was a farm, typically farms, there's a lot of pesticides and fertilizers, things that have been dumped out over the years. And so I don't know if there's been any testing or anything all along, you know, so I don't know what kind of remediation would need to be done, but I think that is a potential issue for anybody who buys that property.
And I think, I mean, I think part of our discussion last time was about proximity, that this is something that, that comes right up against our property. We can certainly think of uses for it, but also the idea of, that we will be impacted by how that is developed. And so that was part of the rationale for expressing interest is that we wanted to, you know, insert some, insert ourselves a foot in the door sort of in the process and maybe have a voice. And the fact that it does, it does come right up against school buildings. So if somebody's going to be tearing down things, it's a reminder that there are, you know, kids right there. And there's, you know, if there's remediation necessary and all of the things that would, you know, can't just be developed straight up where they can answer that to us as well.
So to speak about remediation, you know, there was a deadline to submit questions and that was one of the questions that we had submitted. And the answer was that the phase one and phase two environmental assessments showed no contamination. But then the different question was the asbestos in the paint, which also needed to be abated, it was, there is no inventory. So it is, it is expected that based on the age of some of the buildings that there is.
There's lead paint and asbestos.
Yes, but.
Do we know what they tested for, for pollution?
It's in the phase one, phase two reports that was provided during the R F I on the website. I don't recall, I can't recall them at the moment. I only read it once. So, but according to, according to the answer that they gave, the site's clean. So we just got to worry about asbestos in that paint. I mean.
And the buildings.
The buildings, yeah. So we, we did talk about the fact that, you know, the economic development grant that they're offering, the six million dollars, isn't enough to open the site. We did mention to them that we're a public entity and we're subject to the same tax capitals as local governments. And, you know, it would be something that would have to be a bond opportunity and that it's not, it's not tomorrow. And that we would explore additional options, partnerships and grants. And that, you know, we hope to work with the Empire State Development to further those options. So we, you know, we did speak on, on our limitations to some degree in the proposal also. You know, I'll also say that, that, you know, the proposal, one of the other rejections that the stakeholder had of the original, people that submitted the dough fund, was that they never contacted the school for their project of the school on the property. So the stakeholders seem to want the school involved as well. I don't know to what degree. And, you know, the concern about whether, who can apply, who cannot apply. You know, we've obviously gotten past step one or step two. So we've passed that at least. We may, we may not get past step three. We may get past step three. Again, this is just an iterative process from the Empire State Development folks to.
Is it an appropriate time then to ask if anyone else in their proposals had mentioned the school? Or Dr. Landau, has anybody contacted the district office about their proposals for that site?
No, I haven't received any.
So if that was their rationale for rejecting the dough fund?
Yeah, there will be a Q and A also associated with us answering your questions. So we could, we could ask that, we could propose that, we could say that we need more time on that. They, while, while you would think that perhaps that the requirements for qualifying are very regimented, they seem very flexible. And I guess we only can do is test that flexibility until we figure out that either we don't want it or nobody's.
Or they say they don't want us.
Or they don't want us.
And I think the third question was pretty easy. It's a hundred percent public funding, basically.
They are.
So let me throw out one kind of blue sky idea, which actually goes out of some conversations we've had. If we were to, as a future goal here, start looking seriously at our career in technical education, C T E is the usual abbreviation, acronym. We essentially put most of that out to BOSIs. I heard from people at the Visba conference that the state seems to be encouraging districts to look at what they do internally. I don't know much about that. I'd like to learn more. But I think that one of the initiatives that we should be looking at going forward is to closely examine what we are offering in this, in the non-collegiate track and to see what we could do that's more. I spoke a little bit with Dr. Houli there at the dinner, the BOSI's district super. And he has an idea of possibly locating some courses here that we could be particularly able to promote, possibly in the arts area. And I think that's a splendid idea and that we could really do something very nice with that. We frankly don't need a new facility to do that, but it's the germ of an idea. Here's another aspect. Discussing this with Dr. Landau at one time, he made the observation that Beacon is about forty-five minutes away from any C T E facility. And that's true. The Dutchess BOSI's is at Salt Point. Ulster County BOSI's is at Port Ewen. Orange Ulster is in Goshen and Putnam Northern Westchester's in Yorktown. And we're right in the middle of that dead zone, which offers the possibility of some kind of satellite center if we could put one up where it might be possible. You know, only the people who are expert in this area can really take an idea like this and see if it has any kind of legs. But I'm just offering the general concept that this may be the germ of an idea that could locate some kind of satellite center. It would be convenient. It is also possible for people to go outside of their own county to a BOSI's and they, they do. So if it's convenient, if it's practical. So I just throw that on the table as a blue sky idea.
I mean, I've thought of the same thing. I think, I think, you know, to me, that's a very practical use. I mean, the fact that our students have to go all the way up to Salt Point, like it's, that's a long, long trip. I would think that it would probably be something, it's really more, I think, maybe we partner, but I think it's really something BOSI's would have to look at it because we, you know, we really don't have the, either the jurisdiction of the state to do something like that. I mean, we could do something for our own students, but, but I think, you know, there's a lot of things. The reason why this BOSI exists because when you only have a couple of students from your district, it doesn't pay to do a class in-house. And, and, but it makes sense to combine from various school districts together into a BOSI. So I think the idea of a southern, you know, satellite for BOSI's makes a lot of sense. So I think, you know, that might be the kind of thing, maybe we need to contact BOSI and say, here's an opportunity. You know, we can, we can work with you on this because it's right next to our, our campus. But I think it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, I would love to see a BOSI set a southern campus because I think it would really benefit our students and even other students in Whopper, Jersey and Fishkill because it's, it is closer than it is up to, up to Salt Point.
I mean, I don't know off the top of my head. I can't remember if BOSI's does have an agricultural program, but it's something that they do. And where, is that at the, which, which side is it?
Salt Point.
At Salt Point?
Salt Point.
I don't know.
Their programs are majority run out of the Salt Point Center.
Okay, there's an agricultural program. Also, the thing about the New York State Economic Development Authority is that they know what they've invested in previously and they also know who they're investing in going forward. And so often they like some, some symbiosis with what they've put their money into. So for example, they had invested heavily in hop farms for a couple of years. And part of why the Beacon Brewery won one of the biggest grants ever provided by the New York State Economic Development Authority is because they had realized they had invested heavily in hop farms and they needed an end user for those hops. So they were sort of willing to, you know, sort of pick proposals that were sort of dovetailed with that. So if there is some sort of job development or if there's some kind of direction they're moving in, it would be helpful during our Q and A to find out where there, if there's anything that relates to training or job development or, you know.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get information from them, but I did talk to Department of Labor about the job market and about whether or not we're filling jobs. Their website actually has a high percent of positive change in the following occupations, stonemasons, emergency medical technicians and paramedics, plumbers, pipe fitters and steam fitters, electricians, heating, air conditioning, refrigeration mechanics, installers and computer-controlled machine tool operators, metals and plastic. So, you know, apart while, while we wouldn't, so to address also the, you know, whether we're going to promote job growth with our investment, well, with our plan, the way I had a, the way I think we can is by providing employable qualified skills, qualifiable skills in our graduate, in our graduates so that they can fill those positions and not, and, and so that there can be sustained growth in those areas and job growth. So it's, it's kind of like one step before actually having the jobs. Because if you just have a project and have jobs, but they're not qualified people, it's not, it's not a project.
I was just going to say a couple of things about the BOSI's part. One is Dr. Houli is tentatively scheduled to join us at the next board meeting. I, I know I signed him up. He passed around a thing. He wants to come to every board this fall. I signed him up for November sixth. I don't think I've received an official confirmation, but the purpose of that is just for him to, you know, sort of say hello to the new board, talk about a few things that BOSI's is doing. So I will confirm with them, but if he's here, I think it'd be a great chance to ask him some of these questions. That being said, I did talk to him earlier in the school year. I think one of the things that would be pretty difficult would be the idea of some sort of BOSI's facility here. The reason for that, and I, I will always admit I'm not the expert on BOSI's, but the reason for that is anytime there's any sort of capital project that the BOSI sponsors, the twelve component, we have twelve, twelve in Dutchess, the twelve component districts all need to approve it essentially because they're all taking on debt because of the project. And so I, I, where I was previous, it was, BOSI's just needed to add some H back and some other small improvements and it was an incredibly difficult hurdle for them to get the ten districts in Tompkins County to approve it just because of the increased debt that people were taking on. So if we were trying to propose some sort of BOSI's thing here, A, it'd have to come from BOSI's itself, but B, we'd be asking districts that are, you know, an hour away from us or, I don't know the area as well as you all, but, and, and I, there's no way they would, well, I shouldn't speak for them. I think it'd be highly unlikely that they would say yes. I did talk to Dr. Houli about it, actually way back in the summer. He kind of confirmed that too. He, he said BOSI's vision right now is they have some pretty serious physical, you know, plant upgrades they want to be making to their program in BOSI's and so they're going to be gearing up for some capital projects in the somewhat near future and they're going to be trying to rally, you know, our support for those. I, I think what Craig said, it fits really in line with what Mike said earlier. You know, part of a five-year plan, or part of a long-range plan for a district is really reviewing what we're currently doing and currently offering, so I'm all in favor of that. I, I just think going down the BOSEs road is probably not the road, you know. I mean, there might be agreements you could make with like a neighboring district, you know, to have some kids, but I, I don't think BOSEs could sponsor it. I just don't see the way BOSEs works at, at working. But I could be wrong, and Dr. Houli's coming, and he'd be happy to talk about that with you a little bit more. And he also talked to me about what, what they are interested in doing in Beacon is, is, you know, having a couple of classes down here. And if they do a class in a district, the point of it is that there's something unique about that class that would attract kids from all over Dutchess County to do. And so his, his, his take was offering some sort of like nonprofit arts management coursework, you know, because Beacon, Beacon is pretty unique in that area as opposed to all the other communities in Dutchess. So his interest is there, because he, he, what he said to me was, I could see a kid, a student from Spack and Kill, you know, coming down for that class, or a student from Hyde Park, or a student from the Kipsey. Am I getting all those communities right? Yay! And so, so I think that's where he is. I'm not trying to speak for him, but he, if he's looking to do like a satellite class in a district, it's because there's something really unique about that community that kids are gonna travel for. And so, you know, Craig, Craig said it well, we're sort of in this weird geographic place. Us trying to lure, lure other districts that are in other BOSEs to kind of send their students to something we have here would be very complex. The idea, I think, is sound in some levels, but the way New York is set up, pulling it off would be a very complex political act, because you'd be sort of peeling people off of the BOSEs that they're in. The sense I have of how that works is you're only really allowed to go outside your BOSEs if your BOSEs doesn't offer what it is you're looking for. So we go outside of our BOSEs for a small number of, you know, things. But if your BOSEs offers it, at least my understanding, the way New York's set up, to go outside of that, let's say Beacon sets up like this regional thing for Wapinjers and, I don't know. I'm, I'm at a blank with the communities, but, but some there are really close to us, Halldane or something. They, they would have to make a case that the BOSEs that we're in doesn't offer X. And so it might be possible, and that's why I say it's complex. So, so they're sort of a New York stacked deck against some of what we're thinking because of the way BOSEs works. BOSEs is entirely geared to force you to BOSEs. You know, the whole thing is like, is pushing you, all these little small districts in New York, to use BOSEs for things. So I, I'm not saying this is to be a naysayer, it's just I think the reality of some of it would be complicated, but not impossible, which is complicated.
A question on that. If, so the person from Common Ground, he wanted to partner with this district to, to educate kids about agriculture. Would that, couldn't that, could that be possible? Or because Dutchess BOSEs offers agriculture, that would not be possible?
It would, it would totally be possible for us to do it. If we had some vision of other kids from other districts coming to our agriculture program, I don't see that happening. You know, if we wanted to have our own agricultural program, they could. I mean, just again, I'm, I'm the new guy, but we, we do have fields and, you know, grassy areas. I'm not a farmer, so maybe it can't happen, but we do have some places where, not a huge farm, but where, you know, some gardens and that kind of stuff could go, both at the high school, Roundabout, you know, other places, obviously, you know, the elementary, all those small gardens. So I don't think it has to require us getting new land to do it. But obviously, if Common Ground was doing something there, we certainly could. It's just, it would be us alone, I think.
I'd say, I think, you know, I mean, there's a lot of good ideas, it's just I think, you know, we haven't done some of the preliminary steps, like what's the demand? I mean, you know, if you got two students in the high school say, yeah, I want to do agriculture, it's like, you're not gonna go out and buy a whole piece of property and put up farm buildings or, or buy equipment and things like that for that, you know, something like that. Same thing, I mean, I certainly think that it is good to have a trade route rather than, you know, for people who don't want to go, you know, or don't want to go to college and, and, but certainly want to, you know, learn, learn a trade and make a, a living that way. But once again, what's the demand? How many people do we have that fall into that category? And, you know, you talk about things like pipe fitting, automobile mechanics, you know, air conditioning. How many people are interested in each of those categories? So until we know how many people are, you know, we, we could possibly serve, it's, you know, you don't want to put up buildings or anything until you really know how many people. What kind of program are we looking at here?
I think that, you know, again, I'm not an expert on-
I do like the idea of BOSEs, but I, I mean, I agree with you. They had a project about five years ago where they have a large facility, they rented, and they wanted to replace that with, with a new facility themselves, and that, that went down.
It's tough, you know, because it's, it's, we're putting our own project out there, and, and then for BOSEs to come to you and say, hey, you're gonna have a bigger bill from us next, you know, for the next eight years because of this, it's, it's tough sell. I think one thing that could come out of this, and I'm not an expert, is that other, and I know you all said this too, but other groups developing this, it's known, and, you know, they ask us these questions, we answer them, but the folks, the Empire Development people know that we potentially would want a small part of this, you know, with some larger developer. Because I, other than that, I have trouble foreseeing how we could take on that large, you know, and I know you all probably agree, but, so whatever comes of this, we do, we do need time to figure out where we want to go. Maybe perhaps we buy time because they know that there's an interest here, but we're just, we just can't take on, take it all on ourself.
I think, yeah, to Anthony's, Anthony's point about testing the flexibility of the process and what they, what they're-
I think maybe one of the things you can ask during the Q and A is, is who are the other parties that have submitted applications? You know, and what, what are they proposing? You know, it'd be interesting to see that, because then we really could, you know, we see some, where there's a positive synergy between some, maybe we could contact them and say, you guys wanna, you know, you wanna talk to us about what you're planning on doing? We have our own views, and, you know, perhaps we can do something together. Until we know who the other parties are, it's, it's very difficult.
So one thing I would ask is if you do have questions that you want to ask, just email them so we can make sure, like, when I send out the date that Kelly gets up, just send out the questions if you're not gonna partake in the conversation, so we can ask it. So each board member has an opportunity to ask those questions.
Just to follow up on Dr. Landau's comment, I think he's right. I can't imagine how you could sell a BOSEs capital program to somebody in northern Dutchess or even Arlington for something in southern Dutchess. That would be politically impractical. However, if, if we were the ones who undertook the facility costs, possibly with some state aid, or because we found we had a genuine need, then you can always rent, or just say, here, use the facility. You know, it wouldn't necessarily mean a capital cost for BOSEs. So I think there may be ways around that aspect.
All righty.
I have a couple of questions. Is the board comfortable, right now, the, our submission was not, as far as I know, was not posted. It was not released to the public. Is the board comfortable if our proposal was available to anybody who asked?
It might help. It's public record.
Okay. Second question is-
A question, I mean, they shouldn't be contacting you, though, right?
No.
The, the second question is, we do know of one, at least one group that submitted that, is the board interested in getting some information directly from that group about partnering with the school?
Does he mean that Common Ground Farm had, yeah, I, I kind of wonder why they haven't, if they, if they had interest, why they hadn't reached out-
You know, I talk to folks with Common Ground Farm pretty regularly, because we've been working on sort of patching up their program for this year, and it hasn't come up from staff, so I don't, I don't know. The, the one, I, I know obviously it's public record, and I, I want to be as transparent as possible. The one concern I have with this is we, we're launching something where we're putting a capital project up to a vote.
Right.
And, and that is my main focus right now. I do not want to let this, you know, fall off because of that, but I don't want members of the public to get confused. And so anything, you know, I'll be thinking of that, anything we can do to make sure that doesn't happen, because we, we do have a project that needs voter approval on December fifth. That's, you know, I said that I get a vote my first half a year here, which is great, but like, that's gonna be my focus. We always have a pretty ambitious communication schedule. Like, I, I'm not worried about the public getting confused, I just don't want it to happen. So we'll try to be really clear about that with folks, because there, there's a chance for that. And so we'll work on that not happening on our end. I just wanted to sort of put that out there.
People can inquire about it if they're, if they're interested, and it would be something that would be provided to them. But I think it would be confusing to put it on the website or make it available in that way, because we do have another project going out. And we also don't really have a clear idea of, you know, we have, I think we have more questions than answered. So answering is probably the smart thing to do, is we get some questions, and then we go to the next app. But I, I think even this discussion was very open and transparent. People can watch the video and understand, but that's a, that's, you know, I, I think we, we should be careful about what we, what we release and sort of promote, because we know very clearly what we are promoting, which is something that we are putting to a vote. So I think we should probably not put it on the website or anything.
No, I'm not asking that. I just wanted to know so that I know.
Okay.
Somebody asked me, well, what did the school districts submit? And I said, well, we did this, or I can't tell you, you know.
I think you should say you can't tell somebody, but I think that if they, the, the New York State Economic Development Authority should be where they go to to get that information. They should be able to go and find out who proposed. It's public money and it's public dollars. They should go there. That's the entity gathering all the proposals anyway. So they should be making them available. So you could say go to the New York State Economic Development Authority.
I don't know if they're going to do that. They don't tend to be the most transparent agency that I have ever worked with.
Yeah, I still haven't gotten a copy of the dough fund, the proposal I asked for, so.
Yeah.
All right, we need to, what was your last question?
No, that was so, I mean, I just want to know whether it's, oh, so the potential partners, I mean, do we want to-
Can we get through the Q and A with them first before we start going into-
I think if somebody is a partner, they should reach out to the district. I mean, that was part, that's what the dough fund, what they're claiming the dough fund got dinged for was not reaching out to the district. Then that should, anybody proposing on that site should have some awareness of that, and it would probably be in the best interest of their proposal when they're ready to reach out to the district. So I think we should.
Agreed. All righty. Anybody else? No once, twice? So. All right, the consent agenda. The use of consent agenda to make support of education and make a more effective use of time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate and that item would be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything on the consent agenda that a board member would like to be polled?
Eleven point oh eight.
Eleven point oh eight.
It's a, it's a poll. Okay.
And eleven point oh six.
Hearing all the items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda, I'm asking for a motion to approve eleven point oh one through eleven point twelve, minus eleven point oh eight and eleven point oh six. Bill, second with Georgia. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Eight oh. Eight. And we started out with five in each group, so I just want to make sure I had everybody and not neglected. Eleven point oh six.
Motion to approve eleven point oh six, claims, orders, reports.
Is that a second, Anthony? How about the questions?
I have one question on the claims audit of October tenth, twenty seventeen. On the third page, there is a charge of thirty, thirty-eight thousand dollars, three, six, fifty-one, for sawstow contracting. I'm just wondering what, what that is for.
So that was, actually, I mentioned that earlier in the audit committee. So when we were talking about the balance, that was a lot of money capital project. This was a bill that had, they had done work at Roundabout's Kitchen, and the bill had been in the transition for director of facilities. The bill was never submitted to accounts payable.
Okay.
So it's electrical work that was done at Roundabout for the kitchen work.
For the kitchen work.
Not this pass over to someone before.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Eight oh. Any motion for eleven, okay. So, yeah, so eleven point, oh wait, did you have comments or questions first?
I don't have comments.
Okay.
So for eleven point oh eight, it reads here, these are all separate. I just had one question to start.
So can you, why don't you, if you want to do-
Make a motion.
You want to do them separately?
Yes.
All right, so make a motion to do each paragraph of eleven point oh eight.
So I'd like to make a motion to separate out each of the four paragraphs for eleven point oh eight on resolution one zero two three one seven A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there comments or questions?
Yes.
For that motion of voting on them separately. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Eight oh. All right, so what we'll do, Kelly, is we'll have the first paragraph be the ten, twenty-three, seventeen. You want to do that as B or as A? Because the original motion was A, right, as the whole thing. So then, do you want to do each paragraph and have the first paragraph be B?
Oh, yeah, this will be-
Yep, do you want to do?
It'll have to be C.
Do you want to do AA, BB, CC, DD? So we'll do each one as-
A one, A two, A three, A four.
Yeah, we'll be, so the first one will be ten, twenty-three, seventeen, AA. Then the second paragraph will be ten, twenty-three, seventeen, BB. Then ten, twenty-three, seventeen, CC. And then ten, twenty-three, seventeen, DD. Okay, so is everybody clear how we're doing it? So when we're, we're going through the resolution, we're gonna say, I need a motion for a resolution. And you could read the resolution, and then it would be seconded, and then we can have comments or discussion on it, and then we can vote. Okay?
Yep.
So I need a motion for ten, twenty-three, seventeen, AA.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Craig, so that was, I'm sorry, Kristen and Craig. Okay, is there comments or questions?
I just have one question.
Okay.
So at the end, after it ends at the number five oh two one, right? Does it have to remain with a semicolon and an and, and an and?
Um-
Or cannot be removed in a period going down? Because it, it joins the sentences completely, and is at the end of each one.
And I think that if you look at the first paragraph and the second paragraph, they go together. So it does need that semicolon and to join that first paragraph and second paragraph, because I think a resolution ten, twenty-three, seventeen, AA, and ten, twenty-three, seventeen, BB, go together. They're kind of tied together, so it's hard to say one without the other.
Okay.
Hold on. Any other discussion about ten, twenty-three, seventeen, AA? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Kenya.
Seven one. I need a motion for ten, twenty-three, seventeen, BB. That's the second paragraph, which really kind of goes with the first one. Is there a motion?
Kenya.
Kenya gives, that's a bill. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Kenya.
Seven one. I need a motion for ten, twenty-three, seventeen, CC.
Kenya.
You're making the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Bill, comments or questions?
Is this a normal, no, do we normally do this? Do we normally do suspended without pay? Is there precedent? Yes or no, that's all I ask.
This is the procedure we would use. It's something we haven't done in a while, though.
Any other discussion?
During this state's suspension of that pay for their present days, would we need to replace, have somebody fill in during this timeframe? And we have to pay them during this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Are we currently doing that now?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Kenya.
I need a motion for ten, twenty-three, seventeen, DD.
So moved.
Kristen, is there a second? Bill? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Kenya.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment issue of a particular individual, and the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment issue of a particular individual,
Second.
expected to take action.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, eight oh. I had Anthony and Kristen on that. Thank you so much.